Rise for the White Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Welcome to April 11th, 2018. Have a roll call, please.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Missouri?
Here.
Caprows?
Here.
Weyner?
We have a minute from April 8th. Are there any changes, corrections? Not as their motion?
Some.
Motion maybe is in a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Is it April 8th or 9th?
I got April 8th.
April 8th. April 8th was a Sunday.
Coming down, sorry.
I understand. Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
What do you report?
The total tax income received since the last, since last month, since I just report once a month, $140,330 and $0.01, and that includes two months of payments for Will County Superior Court fines. I also have a thank you note here from the family of Noel Berry, who passed away a couple weeks ago. During a time like this, we realize how much our friends and relatives really mean to us. Your expression of sympathy will always be remembered. Side of Noel Berry family. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board? Pastor, I'm honored.
Do I stand? I don't know what the word is called.
Please stand.
Yeah. I'm Pastor Ron Rock of Zion Lutheran Church here in Beecher. I'm glad to come here. As if I don't have enough meetings, I come to another one I don't have to attend. But tonight, I understand some, perhaps some, something come before the village meeting here tonight is the possibility of change to things on the public access channel or the governmental channel. And I'm simply saying that at our church, we take advantage of that, that channel twice a week. Our church services are aired and we have people from our church and then also from the community who take advantage and listen to the services that we broadcast. I understand at least two other churches are broadcast on that channel as well. And over the years, it's, it's proven to be a good thing for our people. And so I just ask you to be aware of that as you make your decisions. But I would like to also say, being a citizen of the country and a taxpayer, sometimes I get frustrated with people telling governments how to spend the money that they've been in charge of. So certainly it's on your, your shoulders to dispatch your duties the way you know it ought to be done as the best you see it. So I'm far from telling you what to do. I'm just simply giving you some input that as you make your decision, that the channel has been a good thing for our church and for residents of our community. But on the other hand, we defer to you to make your decisions on what you think is best as you dispatch your God-given duties as we see it. So that's all I really wanted to say. I'll certainly take any questions. Otherwise, that's that.
If you could say where you charged a fee for that.
Say, are we charged a fee?
Yeah.
Nominal, $300 a year, $300 a year. And I understand that's what the other churches are, they're charged. Whether they pay it, I don't know.
I'll explain the reason why, in a minute, why I asked the question.
Okay.
Thank you. Who has?
Okay.
Anybody else wish to address the board? Okay, with that being said, since I was the one that attended a couple meetings, I just, I just franchised things. Several things came up in the meetings, one of which was it was changed from a public access channel to a government access channel. Therefore, according to the attorneys, we had some legal liability with the way it's been done all these years. We had no control over that channel. But if something would go wrong on that channel, we would accept liability. That was the first thing that came up. Secondly, anything that came up to my surprise, but yet I could see it coming. Technology is now passing cable by, including the channel. One of which is, is that even Comcast will tell you that their subscriptions for that type of cable that includes that channel is way, way down. Okay? And they're now going to streaming, YouTube, and so on and so forth. And that's what they told us in that meeting. And then, what were the other, two, two other things I thought that came up in the meeting? We have the ability to provide the service through YouTube on our own, with our own links to our Facebook pages. And I would encourage if that channel does get shut down, that the churches do the same thing. That makes it a level playing field for everybody. And that was another point is that with what we have done with Facebook, because I think right now we are more transparent than we've ever been with Facebook pages. We are getting information out different than we ever done before. And then along with the YouTube, hosting our meetings on YouTube, which has been done all along. I got a lesson this morning very quickly that I didn't know that there's a designated channel now that will be, once it's launched, for our board meetings. So in other words, it's going into one specific area where from what I understand before and the way it was uploaded to YouTube, it's all over the place. So it's in the same place where if you want to fix a car, is that correct, basically? Yeah, it's not grouped together, but we've already got a channel that all our board meetings are now going to go to that channel. So we're still going to continue with doing what we're doing. We just think that we are reaching far more people and it's now more technologically advanced. And we have now passed that type of technology by, and it hasn't been upgraded for quite some time. So those were the discussions that we've had with us and the other villagers at the different time. So that's sort of the reasoning why we're suggesting that it's time to move on to something different. Not to mention the fact that we can do it for free, where we were paying $2,000, $3,000 a year. Yeah, I just received the invoice from them for $3,500. But I mean, it's, it's an example of what we're, we're trying to do. So and I, I do sympathize, you know, sure as heck don't want to make churches mad. I don't think the village board does. But I think there may be other avenues for you to do the same thing and broadcast your, your services and so on and so forth.
And you know, as far as transparency goes, I know there was a little bit of a blow up on Facebook the last day or so about it. That as far as I can recall, since maybe 2007 at least, and probably before that, we've been videotaping our board meetings. We do, we do it with our equipment. We upload it to a site and then it goes to PAL and they upload it. But we've been doing it on our own all along. There is no legal requirement to videotape a board meeting or tape it of any kind. I think paper is the only legal part. We've kind of chosen to do that to be transparent with our residents. Basically, like he says, we're, we still intend to continue doing that. It's just a slightly different avenue where it's going up to YouTube anyway. It's still going to be up to YouTube. So that's kind of our side of it. Plus, you know, there's budgets that we have to deal with.
You have a, sure.
Would you like me to stand again?
Sure. Go on.
Be careful when you have the preacher standing over you.
Five seconds now.
I'm done here. My main concern was to get our church services on. And you know, if the, if the station goes away, then that vehicle for making that happen will go away. So you know, there could be a lot of other good reasons that you have monetary or whatever. And you know, I, I, as a citizen in the community, I hope you do the best you can to utilize that technology and save money in the process and so forth. So, but I just, I just wanted you, as you made your decisions and voting later, to be aware that at least our congregation has taken great advantage of that for a number of years. And, and we appreciate that. So throw that into your, you know, as you, you know, make your decisions on the scales or whatever. Just one last thing. Probably, to my knowledge, most of the people who watch our church services on the TV station, they're not technologically savvy. They're the older folks. And you know, they just don't have, you know, internet access. So, but we, we also have our own YouTube channel for our services. So we do put them up in that method too. So, but again, you have to weigh all of the factors and I understand that. And then also some legal things. And again, that's, that's your responsibility to check that out too. So I don't mean at all to be barging in here and telling you what to do. I'm just trying to make you aware of a, a piece of that decision. That's all.
And we, and we really appreciate the fact that you did come in.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, do you know about how many, like when we look at the YouTube channels, we can, you can see how many views there are.
Yeah.
Do you know on the, like how many views you get or, I know you won't be able to tell on that channel because, you know.
The only time we know how many is when there's a glitch in the system. It sounds familiar. Everybody's Spotify clips. I, I know there was, in Peatown, there was three or four 90-year-old ladies that get together for a church service watch party. Can you figure it out? Anyway, so we hear from them and it doesn't happen. And then some, I have a homebound or a shut-in member who lives in Moni and she watches it faithfully. They're the only ones I really know. There could be others. We just, I just don't know, you know. So one of our members watches it on Sunday nights, which is the first broadcast of the week, simply in case he missed something during the preaching of it when he was there in church on Sunday morning. So I can't imagine people fall asleep. Can you imagine that? But anyway, but I just don't know that number, but.
Yeah, just, I was just curious.
I don't even know the scores. I, I just don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Well, I'll bid my adieu unless there's something more you have.
Believe me, you can stay. We're here usually by 11 o'clock at night.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's on your work.
Run while you can.
You got that right.
Anyone else? With that, Finance Administration Committee, trust me, please.
Okay, public hearing. Consider our own budget and appropriation ordinance for the year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019. A motion is needed to open and close the public hearing. The village administrator will read a synopsis of the budget, followed by comments and questions from the board members and the audience. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to the motion. Any questions? Roll call.
Caprows?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Okay, wait for your nod, Frank.
Yes.
All right, go. This budget is a product of a process that goes on almost year-round. It starts with a five-year financial plan, which we completed in the fall. And that five-year financial plan takes us five years out so we can see trends in expenditures and revenues before we get into the nitty-gritty of doing the budget. In the winter time, usually over the holidays, department heads begin their work on the budget and they submit their requests in January. The administrator then makes final revenue projections. The first draft of the budget comes out in early February. The village president administrator worked on a second draft, which is then given to the finance committee in mid-February. The ordinance calls for the village president to work on the first draft of the proposed budget. This year, the finance committee requested that the entire village board review the budget at workshop session. This meeting was held on Monday, March 5th as a village board workshop. The third draft goes to the village board for a meeting in the last week of March and the first meeting in April. And the final amendments are then made. The budget then goes to a fourth draft for public hearing, which is where we are tonight. The budget can still be amended, tabled, or approved as a result of tonight's hearing. This budget and the message has been on the village's website since April 18th. And due notice has been published of this hearing. This is the seventh year of a 0% property tax levy increase for operations. The bond levy is also stabilizing at around $86,000 per year as the village pays off the public works garage, which was built in 2009. No new sources of revenue for the general fund are provided, but several general revenue line items have grown slowly, including the sales and use tax, video gaming tax, and cable franchise fees. Some revenues that have seen a decline include state income tax, personal property replacement tax, and a telecommunications tax. Without some revenue growth, budgeting would have been much more difficult this year. But there was a union wage increase of 2.5% for poll workers and clerical union employees. The Teamster employees, their contract expires on April 30th and we're still in negotiations with them. So we don't have a percentage increase for that line item as of yet, but it will retro once we get it. The department heads and the administrator also budgeted a 2.5% increase. PPO health insurance rates are going to decrease by 2.6% this year. That's good news. The Teamsters health insurance rate increased 10% on March 1st, but this rate increase will expire on April 30th with our current contract. IRF pension employer contribution is 10.77% for all employees this year compared to 11.8% last year. The village remains 90% funded in its pension funds and investments are doing well. Next year, our rate is going to drop to 7.61%, that will be the employer rate of IRF. We plan to hire a new police officer in this proposed budget beginning in May. And the funding for this position came primarily from cuts within the police department budget, most especially the part-time police budget, which dropped from $125,000 to $54,800. That cut to part-time allows them to hire the full-time officers. Two new vehicles are planned for purchase this year village-wide, including a 2019 Ford SUV, replacing a 2010 Ford Taurus, and a 2019 Ford F-250 for the new crew leader. For the crew leader, he's not new, replacing the 2005 Chevy pickup, which he's currently driving. And that truck will be relegated to the sewer plant for a sewer plant operator and sample taking. The old sewer plant car will probably be retired, but we're not going to definitely put any more money into that vehicle. The ash wood continues to be a problem. We budgeted $16,000 for the contractual removal of ash trees that we can't handle ourselves within the department. This is budgeted MMT and $3,000 for the purchase of parkway trees to replace at least 12 of the trees that will be taken out this year. We plan to replace $25,000 in sidewalks, $25,000 in damaged curbs, and spend another $5,000 on mudjacking sinking sidewalks. The design of the Enfield Street Bridge and Road is continuing this year. We should end our design phase this year. The project will be ready for bid in 2019, but we'll have to wait for all of the federal approvals. We plan to bid out this project in early 2020. We are also planning to replace the water main on Dunbar from Hodges, Indiana. This project should be bid out in May. $16,000 is budgeted for the final phase of skater improvements, which will link the new sewer plant to the water plant computer system. We're going to turn and test one-third of the valves in the water system at $7,000. That's an annual program now. $29,400 is budgeted for replacement of 100 water meters. In addition to the 200 meters we installed, I believe this last year, I think we're going to be close to 200 meters installed. So we're in the process of getting all those meters replaced in town. $20,000 for the creation of a TIF district is budgeted, which will include the old downtown area and extended potential vacant land for future industrial prospects. $25,000 is budgeted for crack sealing the streets, which were paved in the last six years. NYXL will continue to be funded, but the smartphone application will be dropped. The railroad quiet zone, I'm surprised one of our residents that's been in every budget is not here tonight. He'd be happy to hear that that $100,000 is funded in the general fund for the quiet zone. The water and sewer debt service fund is loaning general $100,000, which we paid back at the rate of $20,000 a year for five years to get the quiet zone installed in the coming 12 months. $4,500 to replace the main server in the village hall has been budgeted. This main server holds all of our vital records and village accounts. And village staff shares all those files on that server. And I believe it's about, what, six years old now, shouldn't it? $2,000 is what budgeted for historic preservation commission work. And $5,000 was budgeted as the village's share of the new totlot in Fireman's Park. This project has a Phase 1 budget of $20,000. Early donations are being requested to make this a community effort. $5,800 for security cameras is also budgeted in Fireman's Park, which will be tied into the police department's camera system. And of course, the largest public works project in the village's history is going to start this fiscal year. That's the $10 million sewer plant project. We are going to run those debt project through the water and sewer capital account and the water and sewer debt service account then will be making the loan payments. Of course, we received a 30-year loan from EPA of 1.12% to pay for that project. Current revenues coming in will make the debt payments. That includes a half percent sales tax approved by referendum and the current debt service charges and utility taxes. Major financial changes to the budget in the coming year. The water, sewer, and refuse rate increases will be going into effect here on May 1st. Will cost the average resident $22.80 more in the coming year. That would be on water, sewer, and refuse on an average residential home. The property tax levy for the village for operations and debt remains unchanged. Actually, there has been a lower village property tax rate as a result because the assessed value of the community went up last year. Not by much, but it did go up a little bit. Overall, fund balances of the village's major funds will drop by about $312,000 over the coming year. And this is due primarily to the work being completed on the water and sewer side of the ledger. The general fund will drop by about $20,000 with the TIF district work we anticipate using reserve cash. However, the current fund balance of $600,000 is expected to hold, giving us a 60-day operating reserve. I believe that the budgets for the next few years will not be easy, as this year's process was, since the state has not yet fixed its problem and our cost to operate continues to increase more rapidly than our revenues. I anticipate some additional belt tightening in the coming years. This is why we conduct five-year financial plans in an effort to spot trends and address them early. However, this year's budget is balanced and no reserves are required for any of our operations to make that happen. This is the proposed budget, Mr. Chairman, for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions or thoughts?
From the audience as well.
From the audience?
Yes. To the board?
Does this mean we'll have a quiet zone? Because I'm a real close.
This is, this is as likely as you're going to get to getting a quiet zone. If, if it doesn't happen, it's because the feds don't approve it or it costs a million bucks. But our preliminary study that we had said it was going to cost about $100,000. So I'm pretty confident it will happen. It may not be in this next 12 months. It might carry over. It's worth the mercy of the federal highway or federal railroad administration. But this is a big, big first step. The intent is to start and finish it, but like anything else, something can go wrong along the way. And we still have to pay off the $100 in the next five years. Any other questions?
If not, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Subdue. Motion may, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to close the public hearing. Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number?
2018-04.
Okay, I'd like to consider resolution number 2018-04, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2018 and 2019.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions on motion?
Caprows?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
All right, consider ordinance of appropriations for fiscal year 2018, 2019. The appropriations ordinance is exactly the same as the budget resolution. This is a legal authority legislation for the village to spend money.
1283.
1283. Okay, I'd like to consider ordinance 1283 appropriations for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions on motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Okay, consider a resolution authorizing expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for fiscal year 2018, 2019. This resolution is required by IDOT and reflects exactly what is in our proposed budget for the coming year. I'd like to consider resolution number 2018-05, authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second of motion. Any questions? Roll call.
Caprows?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yeah.
Consider ordinance of supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and current year. During the course of last year, the village board approved the purchase of a used dump truck for $45,000 and received 15 and un, un, okay, unanticipated grant funds from CSX Railroad 10,000 and IPRF 5,000 for the installation of a portable generator to power the entire police station. And this revenue was received last, this year. The enclosed ordinance addresses these two items and provides a legal basis for the expenditure of these funds. We are hoping that the generator project will be completed by May 1st so we can expense it out this month. If not, we may have to do the same thing next year and use unencumbrance to finish the job, to finish the work. Staff recommends the ordinance be approved. So I'd like to consider ordinance.
1284.
1284, supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2017 and 2018.
1284, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
All right, Lotbrock and Amen conducted pre-audit conference with the village staff. A schedule was created to conduct a field work as soon as we can close the books on the current year, May 19. The audit will be presented at the first meeting in October. Last item, Eastern Will County Benefit Council Health Insurance Update. We joined this pool in 2012 and started with a zero balance. As of January 31st, the entire Illinois Public Benefit Council self-insured pool fund balance is $104,180,163. Eastern Will portion of this balance is $888,281. Not a bad performance since 2012. The Village of Beecher portion of this balance is $104,725, 31,154 of which is unrestricted. Our self-insured rate also dropped by 2.6% for the coming year. The effects of the pool have been very positive. If East Will subpool stood alone in the market, our self-insured cost per insured life would have been four times greater for claims under $35,000 if we had not joined the IPBC. The advantage in this number of participants in the pool leveraging the rate and network cost. As a matter of fact, the current Blue Cross program provides IPBC members is not even offered commercially anywhere else since it's simply not affordable to individuals and small groups. They see the enclosed report.
We had a hiccup with the addition of Rantool into our pool. That was such a big number. And they had such a poor performing year. It killed us. But the IPBC agreed to remove them from our pool and make them a standalone member. They gave a special credit for a year, which really made the numbers look a lot better. So they're working with us to keep the rates down. I'm happy.
There's no questions? That is my report.
Public buildings, properties, parks, and recreation, those who approach. Fireman's Park summer schedule is filling up fast. The park is going to be used extensively this year as there is something planned somewhere in the park almost every day from now until the 4th of July. Beecher, rec's baseball season will end Sunday, June 23rd. Ballfield lights for Fireman's Park update?
The poles are off.
I saw a few poles. And rec probably has a better update than we do about what's going on.
Yes, we do.
I don't know what Scott would have said tonight, but I guess we'll wait till next week. I talked to him last week. He didn't know that they were going to.
We did write a letter to everybody on the east side of Woodward Street and on Miller Street. And I never got any responses back to that letter asking if they had any concerns. So I guess that's working in our favor.
Rec did acknowledge the poles on opening day and they were very thankful that the village does work with them. Refuse parks and what they do. Just thought you had that. They did mention the poles.
Same with that.
The totlot project update, I think it's got to be moved now. That's the last I heard. Can't go in that space.
Yeah, they use that correct management. So there's a bunch of.
Yeah, there's a, there's a sanitary line that runs directly through there, also a storm line. And there's the old foundation for the old bathroom that used to be there.
So I know Scott and I were working on the new location.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if we've settled on one yet, but we're doing that, and I know we're still trying to get the crews done. I've done a lot of the interviews, we're pretty generous so far.
Well, set park infield condition update, do you have anything, Matt?
Uh, we've been out there twice. Um, I think we got them looking pretty good, better than we normally do at this time. Um, we got a new drag-on order that should be here either tomorrow or Thursday, sorry, Wednesday or Thursday, and hopefully we can tear that baseball field up a little better and get that one...
The grass in field one?
Yeah. We're gonna try to leave the grass in there for now and see if we can work around it.
Yeah, I was out there last week with our baseball team and the Rock ones, they were pretty good.
Yeah.
So, one of the...
Yeah.
Thank you. New generator for police station. Generator was obtained from US Military Circles Program. Ten thousand was granted by the CSX Railroad and five thousand from the village insurance carrier to have the necessary electrical work done to provide the entire building with backup power. Since it was not cost-effective to locate the generator in the east side of the building, a plan was made to have the generator on a trailer, but to have it hooked up when severe weather was in... An automatic switch would then start the generator when called for. The Penfield Street Rehab Project will then design and location for the generator where it needs to go, and we can then make a permanent replacement. Chief approve this plan.
That was the chief's first official meeting. The first day of work, we sat down and had to work off this generator issue, but we think we have a plan, you're happy with it.
Yes.
And now it's just a matter of being implemented. It's across over fiscal year, so we're probably gonna have to do another something next fiscal year to address it, but this project's gonna overlap, because the electrician has not started the work yet. The trailer's here.
Yeah, generator's...
The generator's ready.
Yeah, generator's mounted on the trailer, it's ready to go, so we're just waiting on the electric side in the building.
How long's that gotta take?
Maybe we have to install an ATS switch into the wiring, a year or two?
It shouldn't take long, once we get them in here.
Yeah, the problem with where we wanted to put the generator was another twenty thousand just for the wire. To put it where we wanted to put it, and it's like, nah, we have better ways to spend twenty grand, so we've got a plan. There's nothing else to add to my report. Finding buildings, zoning committee, trustee, sir.
Okay, um, building department monthly report is enclosed for review. PZC meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, April twenty-sixth. Um, the Gold Vault has reached out and requested an expansion of a special use permit to extend their outdoor seating area further west. Also, another solar farm proposal is coming before us from Community Power Group. It will be received within our one point five mile planning area on the north side of Corning East of Dixie, just east of the new church. This is another twenty-year lease deal on seventeen acres. CMAT comprehensive plan grant update. Three proposals were received and interviews were held last week with the selection committee. By the time of the board meeting, we may know who the selected firm will be, and this will be reported. Work will begin in May, and full involvement by the PZC will begin this summer. Community involvement will begin in the fall, if not sooner. This project remains to be on target for about a hundred and thirty thousand. The village's portion of the cost will be ten percent upon completion. This will be an exciting and engaging process for all who want to get involved. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
I can add to that. We interviewed three firms. George was part of the interview committee, but he was in Florida that week, we had to do it, but he did read the three reports. Um, and George, you wanna comment of those three proposals, which one did you like the best?
Oh, that Tesco the best.
Tesco.
There was two that were good and one I didn't like, I wasn't impressed with, so... But I think Tesco's knowledge of the village is a big plus.
After the interviews, the two firms that you point out were very close. We decided to go with Tesco because there is a familiarity with Tesco and the planning and zoning commission. So, that's the decision that was made was to go with Tesco. CMAT also agreed with that decision, and they also agreed to do two sub-area plans, one being Wool Street and the other being a marketing plan for the senior housing project.
I think Bishop Brown too, I believe Tesco was the cheapest.
They were by far the least expensive.
Yeah, they were the least...
But again, we were told not to look at the numbers...
I always look at that, I mean, you're still...
I can't help but look at it. But again, we were... CMAT told us to pick the firm that we thought would do the best job, so we didn't get hung up on the dollars. But you're right, they were by far the worst. That's...
Anything else that I have?
Public safety committee, trustee cross.
Public, or sorry, public. Police Department monthly report is enclosed for review, as well as the MA monthly report. Uh, we do number three now, or do you want to move it to the end?
You didn't request it. It's going to executive session. Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, at the end, request for executive session, discuss a list of candidates to be hired, feature police officers. Standard practice, discuss the hiring of a candidate before an offer is made. In this case, a list of three candidates has been formed. Chief wishes to discuss this list, and if the first candidate does not pass required tests. Any other info?
Public Works Committee, trustee Caprows. Water Department, monthly reports enclosed for review, along with the Sewer Department monthly report. Feature wastewater treatment plant rehab project update. We hope to have a pre-con date set. Occurs sometime in May, I believe that is set now, Tuesday, May first, nine AM. Is that correct for us? Correct. Um, at this time, shop drawings are gonna be provided and reviewed by Backstrom Women doing the paperwork. They'll also be doing the paperwork for our first draw on the loan to get our design fees reimbursed for approximately six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Dunbar Water Main Replacement Project update. Field work has been complete, design is in swing. Permit has been applied for from both the IEPA and the Will County Highway Department, and I believe we have a meeting set up Wednesday at one o'clock with Backstrom Women. That's correct. To go over that. Chestnut light streets are... Chestnut street lights are on. Um, that's the final report for this project. I did receive a text and I spoke to two residents that live on that street, and they're very happy with it, so... It was the first night they went on, I did get a text with a picture of it saying, "Look at the beautiful lights." Um, so...
Two years?
Yeah, it was, yeah, about a year and a half. Long project, little project, but is what it is. It's done, it's complete, and they're happy. Spring hydrant flushing occurred last week. Matt, you got anything to update on that? Everything went good?
Yeah, everything went good, it's complete.
No problems?
Nope.
Excellent. Street sweeping begins Monday, April twenty-third, which actually...
It actually started Friday afternoon, Friday evening.
Excellent, we got the truck and everything. You got a guesstimate as to when it will be complete?
Uh, it'll be done by Thursday afternoon.
Thursday, so it should be done by Friday?
Yep.
Perfect. Excellent. Just a question, is this patching of Blue Street gonna be done so we can do an effective sweep on Google or not?
It does not sound like it.
It doesn't sound like it. So, you're gonna sweep it the best you can and deal with it?
Yeah, we have our sweeper for our skid steer too, it's a little smaller, obviously, but we can clean it up with that, so... It'll be ready for the car cruises.
Uh, curb and sidewalk repair program update. Public Works will be generating a list of repairs. You got any update on that yet? I know a big thing is the curbs to look at.
Yeah, Foxhound is number one. That gentleman emailed us last winter and the one that you were talking about there in his driveway, so that one's number one. Um, I still have to create a list for the rest of it and figure out the numbers with Perino.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, we'll be working on that here shortly.
Good. Uh, part-time hiring process update. Um, I believe you guys...
That's completed, yeah.
You got that, it's done, it's complete. We got two offers out there, we got two...
Yeah, two commitments.
Part-timers starting.
Yeah, one's starting May fourteenth, and the other one is starting the day after Memorial Day.
Full-time hiring process update. Applications for both MM1 and Class 1 operator positions have been... are being taken until Friday, May third. At that time, we have a Public Works Committee meeting set for Thursday, May tenth, at seven o'clock. At that time, we will meet, consider the applications for both, and decide how to proceed. We'll keep the full board informed as to what direction we go, and we'll be starting to set up interviews after that process for both positions. Consider a motion authorizing the village president to sign an agreement with IDOC regarding improving sidewalk ramps at Pasadena and Dixie. Uh, it's just a standard agreement, it only pertains to the improvements they're making at Pasadena and Dixie. So, I'll go ahead, I'll make a motion authorizing the village president to sign an agreement with IDOC regarding the improving sidewalk ramps at Pasadena and Dixie. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to the motion, any questions? Pro call.
Caprows?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Uh, consider authorizing payment in amount of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to funk trailers in Morris, Illinois, for the purchase of two tandem access trailers. One of these trailers is for the new generator to be used for the police station, and the second trailer is for the creation of a second landscaping trailer for the Public Works group. Increase efficiency within the department, it'll be set up with another weed whacker and all the equipment they need, so we can have more going on in more than just one area. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion authorizing payment in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to funk trailers in Morris, Illinois, for the purchase of two tandem access trailers. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any questions or motion? Pro call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes. There's no questions, I conclude my report. I can add, Public Relations Committee, trustee Meyer.
Uh, spring newsletter update, a draft of the newsletter should be available either prior to or at the meeting. I emailed everybody this afternoon. If you wanna see the draft, I have a copy here. Uh, we had to add a survey in there for the IEPA, which is a requirement that we have to take care of. That delayed it a little bit, we've just been behind in the office for the last few weeks, so I had to work out a few bugs, things out of it.
Ours, we sold two half-beat ads.
Everyone should've gotten their email this afternoon, and it's... I'm working with the printer right now with the details about the insert survey, 'cause they're gonna perforate it, but it should be mailed next week. Hopefully by next week.
If there's any question for you, can wait till after the meeting, before the side end, question on some wording in one area.
Okay.
So, just remind me, 'cause I'll forget the chance.
There's a couple things I haven't gotten.
Okay.
So, we'll go for that, too.
Okay.
Do you get mine?
It's just recent, so I don't know...
Really?
It's like they had the other one, and then I switched to this one, and...
Okay, let me check. I'll check up, yeah, we'll talk after meeting. Uh, Facebook page update, we're about ninety days into the new Facebook page. The last I looked earlier today, we had six hundred and eighty likes and seven hundred and ten follows, which isn't huge for a Facebook page, but it's pretty good for ninety days.
What was your numbers?
Six hundred and eighty likes and seven hundred and ten follows.
The police department's got a triple.
Yeah, I don't have access to be able to see theirs. Police Department Facebook page has also taken off, and ours is very informational. The police department's is very entertaining.
Yes, to say the least.
There's people that just go in there and check the police department Facebook page every day to see what's gonna be on there. But I don't know what their numbers are, I don't have access to that, so... Next is the ordinance that we were discussing earlier, the ordinance repealing ordinance number eleven sixty-three, which created the Triton Cable Commission. It created a commission that was never formed, and the relevance of such commission is no longer valid. Legal counsel has advised us to repeal the ordinance to remove us from any future liability. It is recommended that the ordinance be approved. Did you have anything else to add that we didn't talk about earlier, or...
Now, if there's any other thing, this is, and I don't know where this is gonna go, with the WPAL, has a Facebook or is it a web page?
We have a Facebook page.
Yeah, Facebook page, and actually, there was more information to me on that Facebook page than there was on TV, so I don't know whether he continues to do that, but once again, we have no control over that as well either, so...
Well, and the last I looked, they were broadcasting village board meetings, there were two days a week, and it looked like it was broadcast, I think the first day was maybe Tuesday, eight in the morning, ten at night. I mean, those are a little bit rough times, and he may be limited as to when he can put those.
As opposed to the way we're gonna do it, he could do it anytime.
Exactly, and I think the second day was at seven o'clock, was prime time, but that was when our meetings, at least that's what it said on the Facebook page, when our meetings were being broadcast. Um, and then he was also, again, it was on the Facebook page, and then it was on YouTube. And I went on YouTube today, and actually, I looked at ours, because we had the last village board meeting posted on our channel as well, and I think we had three views or four views. The one from WPAL had ten views at that point in time of our last village board meeting on the ninth. Again, I don't know how many people go, you don't actually watch TV when it's on, but I know, you know, if you don't have Comcast, you can't view it. I mean, you can't, if you stream, if you have DirecTV, if you've got Dish, if you're on the country with any of the others, you're not able to see it either. So, um, you know, we have, like I said earlier, we tape our board meetings, we have been for years, there's no plans to stop taping them. We've got our own YouTube channel, where instead of uploading it and then having WPAL upload it again, we can just upload it to YouTube. Um, you know, we haven't raised taxes in about six years. Every year, prices go up, and we try to look for little things that we can kind of cut back on, and this is something where it's a little bit redundant, we're doing it anyway, and, you know, that's kind of where this came from. Plus, legal counsel telling us that there's no need for us to be involved in this commission. So, that's kind of the information. So, I want... What is ordinance number?
Twelve eighty-five.
Twelve eighty-five. I will make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve eighty-five, which repeals ordinance number eleven sixty-three, which created the Triton Cable Commission.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Second. Any questions or motion? Uh, I got just a couple of comments to add to that. One, I appreciate the work that's being done to come up with this conclusion. I was a no vote on ordinance eleven sixty-three, so I got no problem repealing it. And also, I think the biggest thing to touch on, which is one of my biggest complaints with only using PAL as a source for our meetings, is that it only goes to Comcast customers. In this village, you have numerous options for television, for or non, and the way it was set up, only Comcast residents had the opportunity, if they could catch it, the once or twice a week, it was shown at whatever times, because, um, the one thing I do know that, I do know people that watch it on YouTube, um, and have watched our meetings on YouTube and have watched our meetings on YouTube over the last years. We can accomplish that on our own. Um, you brought up the fact that in ninety days, we got six hundred and eighty likes on our page. WPAL has five hundred and nineteen likes. And I don't know how long their page has been about, but I can go back to when and then I looked at a meeting to question about something that came up in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen and it was there on their Facebook page. So in ninety days, we've surpassed them by twenty percent, over twenty percent in likes. Um, also, in over twenty percent in follows, they have five hundred and five follows, we have six hundred and ten.
Seven ten now.
I think, even by just us doing it and putting on our Facebook page with a link to our YouTube page, I think we are able to touch even more people. And if we can get the feature police department to help us out with that, with their one thousand eight hundred and eighty-four likes and their one thousand nine hundred and fifteen followers, that could be even better where we could touch even more people. I think, and I do take offense to some of the things I've seen put on PAL WPAL Facebook page by, um, the person who runs it, um, making accusations that it will cost our village residents more money in the cost of us needing to buy cameras and the time for our employees to record these things. Um, I've been a part of this village board since two thousand and eleven and ever since my first day on here and my first meeting, we were recording our meetings with our own property, our own cameras, with our own staff who was already here attending the meeting anyway. So for them to put out, uh, fallacies out there and just outright misinformation to try to encourage people to come here, that we are doing something wrong, I don't feel that way, I think we are saving our residents money and I think we have an ability to touch even more residents than they do. So for that reason, I will be voting yes to repeal that, other than the fact that I was against that ordinance when it first came out, but that's all I have on that.
Are we reaching out and touch someone?
Huh?
Are we reaching out and touching someone?
I think so, I think between the feature police department, I love that, I mean, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-four likes, that's more than three times what we have and way more than three times what WPAL has, so.
That was a commercial, was it?
No.
Reach out and trust someone?
You know?
Yeah. Where am I at?
Is it like a logo thing?
We have a second.
Okay, can I have a roll call please?
Caparros?
Yes.
Mizurk?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Committee, sorry, consider the creation of the sesquicentennial book committee. Uh, the purpose of this committee would be to publish a new chapter in the quadquicentennial history book covering the last twenty-five years and make it an insert into the back of the nineteen ninety-five book. Funds would have to be raised to pay for publishing and printing costs. The administrator who's discussed this was Shirley Berry, the original chair of the nineteen ninety-five book committee, and she has agreed to serve on this committee and will be a tremendous asset. She needs some personal time, but would be willing to start work on this project later this summer. It takes about two years to write and lay out the chapter since only about forty percent of what's originally written makes the final cut. Uh, the original publisher, Liberty Lithographics, is still in business and was also contacted to provide a proposal for printing the approximate twenty-five-page chapter. They have actually digitized the original edition of the book, believing that someday a print would be necessary. So all the fonts and color schemes used are preserved. Um, Mrs. Berry has some other candidates that would serve on the committee. So this subcommittee would then report to the village's community relations committee and I would be the liaison. So this does not, does this need a motion or we're just considering the creation of it at this point?
It falls under your committee, you're just, I guess, letting them know that if there's any objection, but...
Any questions?
We'll get them.
Say that word again.
Sesquicentennial?
Two thousand and twenty.
Have a harder time with quadquicentennial. The next, consider a motion authorizing an award of bid to Drolly Chevrolet in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for a two thousand and eighteen Chevy Camaro as the Fourth of July raffle car. Five bids were received and opened and deemed qualified bids. Of these, the lowest bid was from Drolly Chevrolet and there's an enclosed bid tab sheet. Um, the commission recommends that this bid be approved. And, um, we've got the bid sheet on here, it is, the color is called red hot. So I would like to make a motion awarding the bid, um, to Drolly Chevrolet in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for a two thousand and eighteen Chevy Camaro as the Fourth of July raffle car.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Questions in the motion? Go call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mizurk?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
And that ends my report.
Okay. There's a proclamation that was in our packet and I'll only brief, read one paragraph of it because there's a lot of wherasses, but May sixth, May twelfth is municipal clerks week. And since we have a very important municipal clerk in our, in our village board tonight...
I think she wants to hold the thing right, she said.
I didn't even wear names to this, oh no. I have to retype it anyways because there that I found the title. Anyways, the most important part... I didn't type it for the record, but anyways. And I did neither, because if it was done, it would've been done right. But anyways, the most important part is the bottom paragraph is, "I, Greg Savansky, President of the Village of Beecher, Will County, Illinois, to recognize the week of May sixth through May twelfth as municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Janet Connor, who has twenty-five years of service this year." "And to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary..." Okay, you're going to the sesquicentennial thing. "Exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent, April twenty-third." What I'd like to do is have a motion supporting. So, there's a motion made and there's a second. Go call please.
Caparros?
Yes.
Mizurk?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
I think we all appreciate the work that you do, how municipal clerks do. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Where's her... It's got a proclamation.
Checkers in the mail. Okay, uh, we're going down to lobby day again this week, Wednesday, Jeff, Bob, and I will be down in Springfield and trying to see some of our legislators and so on and so forth. Although we just found out today that the governor is in Poland, I guess. I guess we won't see him. CSX and Creed Intermodal, we have absolutely no information, it's gone dark. Contact to both Creed and a contact to both CSX, they have no information whatsoever. We did find out that the land is being leased for farmland this year, so which means you're probably not gonna see anything until next year if you see anything at all. So I don't really have much more information on that. Uh, May seventeenth, we pay a tone at Moneer hosting the Sessor Mayor's Management Meeting out of Old Field. Just remember, you're all invited. If you'd like to go to that, please let Bob know so he can make your reservations. Uh, May twenty-eighth is falling on a holiday. Would there, someone like to make a motion to cancel that? Queen or Wood?
I'll make a motion to cancel the May twenty-eighth, Beecher Village Board meeting.
So motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second motion. Any questions?
We're not either.
Just as one comment, I'm gonna double up then the May and June meetings with some committee reports if there needs to be committee. Go call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Mizurk?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
So are you open, let's just stick at the forecourt. Any new business? Would someone like to make a motion to go to the executive session to discuss the police list?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to the motion. Go call.
Caparros?
Yes.
Mizurk?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.